It's Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, and I called the meeting to order. So as you know, usually we're downstairs, and so we're up here for a change. Kind of nice to be in the bigger chamber. Also, another thing that's a little unusual today is we're going to be taking votes, and we don't typically do that, but we have a time-sensitive item. So the first order of business is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Vento and seconded by, there were several seconds, Johnson. Approval of the agenda. Can I have, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion is adopted. Sorry, transitioning here. Approval of minutes. The next item is approval of the minutes from our August 7th, 2019 meeting. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes? It's been moved by Johnson and seconded by Chambliss, the August 7th, 2019 meeting minutes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are adopted. So that brings us to business, and as you know, typically in a council of the whole, we don't have business, but today we have three business items pursuant to its bylaws. The council may consider a time-critical business item on a committee of the whole agenda when the item requires timely action by the council's governing body. The council will consider and take formal action on this business item at this committee of the whole meeting. The first is the 2019-179 Southwest Light Rail Transit, which is the Green Line Extension, First Amendment to the Hennepin County and Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority Capital Grant Agreement for the LNTP, period, from Jim Alexander. So, I think, I know Jim's here, he was in the back, right there. Is there anything you want to say about this? I know this is a big deal. So first of all, I will say, congratulations on getting the, is this the LNOP or this is the, yeah, well, I'll let you talk about it first.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm Jim Alexander, Project Director for Southwest LRT. We do have a presentation that we gave to the Transportation Committee earlier, if you want to go through that, or just want to talk in general about these two items here.
Talk in general.
Okay. Okay, so this first item, 2019-179, has to do with a grant agreement amendment with the Hennepin County and Hickra, and it revolves around the LNTP, the LNTP that is associated with our activities tonight for the systems contract. But essentially to back up, so everybody's on where we are right now, we received a letter of no prejudice from FTA just recently here, and so we are now able to award the systems contract depending on your vote on that tonight. And so we also accompany with that is to give an amendment to the grant agreement that we have with the county, and so they kind of brought a couple together.
Tell us about, and then the county's taking action as well?
Yes.
They did yesterday?
Yes, Madam Chair, the county did meet yesterday, and they did take a vote, they did approve.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Alexander? Let's, I think, you know, what I want to say is congratulations on getting LNOP number two. I think that was a lot of work upon your part and the staff. I know that Joan, is Joan here? Yep, Joan Hollick did a lot of work, so thank you for both of that, to Meredith Vadas and to Wes Coestra and Mary Bogie, and everybody that worked on that. The LNOPs are a big deal in terms of staff work and the precision, the timing, the dealings with the FTA, and I think you all really did a fantastic job of doing that, even though there was a short delay. We had some help from our congressional delegation, as well as businesses calling on our behalf to talk about why this was so important. And so we're grateful, and we're grateful to see that by getting that, we're now able to award or do the capital agreement for the LNTP period. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And is it 97% or whatever the funding that this would cover then? I know it's by far and away the majority.
Yes, Madam Chair, councilmember, 97% is actually how much we have essentially in hand on contracts we have anticipated for this project, so we have essentially a number from a contractor that's already been awarded, and we're working on civil, for example, or we have the systems contract where we have a bid number. And so 97% of the overall project, we're in a very good spot right now in terms of what we know about the project. You know, as always with this project, we always have kind of ups and downs, and we continue to monitor things as we go forward, but that's in a very good situation right now, that we have that understanding of where our numbers are going right now.
And I know with the Green Line there, I think there were three LNOPs, and then now with the extension, they're packaging them, and you're submitting them as a package, so you anticipate that they'll be fewer?
Madam Chair, councilmember, well, where we're sitting right now is that we've been talking with FTA about the next steps, and that's the full funding grant agreement, and we've already submitted documents for that. We did that late in August, and right now we're projecting early 2020 to get that FFGA, but there's always some uncertainty with that process because it is a lengthy, a lot of, you know, a lot of things going through in terms of looking at all the documents and making sure everything's in order. And so if we don't get the FFGA by the end of March of 2020, then we'd have to pursue a letter of no prejudice number three, and we'd have to probably start that work early in the year because it takes some time to get that process going, but we'll monitor that as we go. We actually just met with FTA yesterday at a quarterly meeting and talked this over, and we're going to kind of wait and see, see how the FFGA is progressing through this year, and see how we're sitting by the end of the year into January, to see where we are. But hopefully we won't have to do it, but it's always a tool we have, toolbox in case we need to.
Just an incredible amount of work, and thank you and your staff, because it's huge to get to this point, and to see all the work going on is really, really, really exciting, and then to have this LNOP and then be able to award the next contract is a huge monumental step forward in the process, and I think everybody believes it now and is excited to see the progress, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Councilmember Barber.
If we're ready, I could make the motions?
Yes.
All right. Madam Chair, councilmembers, business item number 2019-179 is regarding the First Amendment to Hennepin County and the Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority Capital Grant Agreement for the Limited Notice to Proceed Period. In December 2018, the council executed a capital grant agreement with Hennepin County and Hickra to complete engineering and begin civil construction work. The CGA was $434,901,943,000 and goes through the end of this month. The amendment provides additional funding and extends the time period to March 2020. In addition to continuing design support, right-of-way acquisitions, and civil construction activities, this amendment will allow for the systems and SCADA contracts and contractors to begin work. Therefore, Madam Chair, I move that the Metropolitan Council authorize the regional administrator to negotiate and execute the First Amendment to Hennepin County and Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority Capital Grant Agreement for the Limited Notice to Proceed Period to add $118.6 million for a total of $553.5 million to fund for Southwest LRT LNTP project activities and extend the grant through March 2020.
There is a motion by councilmember Barber, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I think I heard councilmember Cummings first, and seconded by councilmember Cummings. Is there any further discussion? Again, we just want to extend our congratulations and glad to see things moving forward, and thank all of the staff at the Southwest Project Office for their work. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. Madam Chair, councilmembers, business item number 2019-180 is systems contract award to Aldridge Parsons. In June, the council received three bids on systems invitation for bids ranging in amounts from $194.4 million to $199.9 million. The systems contract includes signaling and communication systems and electrical elements to power the trains. The council's Office of Equal Opportunities set a DBE goal for this contract of 12%. Aldridge Parsons' bid includes commitments to make good faith efforts towards meeting the DBE goal of 12% and the workforce goals of 32% people of color and 20% women participation for construction labor. The Federal Transit Administration provided a letter of no prejudice allowing the council to award this contract and making associated class eligible for reimbursement under a subsequent full funding grant agreement. Therefore, Madam Chair, I move that the Metropolitan Council authorize the regional administrator to award and execute a contract 17P000 for systems construction for the Southwest LRT project to Aldridge Parsons, a joint venture for $194,411 million contingent upon receipt of letter of no prejudice from the Federal Transit Administration and approval of the LNOP work from Hennepin County.
There's a motion by councilmember Barber for 2019-180. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's see, I think it was councilmember Gonzalez, and be a second by councilmember Gonzalez. Is there any further discussion? Again, I'll just say it's great to see this moving forward, glad to have the timing on this, and as we know, Hennepin County voted on this yesterday. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. So, thank you. Finally, we have the 2019-205 Joint 2019 Special Budget Amendment. It says from Ed Petrie, are you also making that motion?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair, and no big numbers for me to stumble over when I have to read this time. So, business item 2009-205 is a joint 2019 budget amendment. The special capital budget amendment includes an amendment to the capital budget. The capital program includes the closing of completed projects and moving funding for projects from the Plan CIP to the authorized capital program. Projects include the Southwest LRT project, and Haywood expansion, electric bus infrastructure, new Minneapolis bus garage. This item has been reviewed and approved by the Management and Transportation Committee. This Madam Chair, I move that the Metropolitan Council authorizes the 2019 Unified Budget as indicated and in accordance with the attached tables.
Councilmember Barber has motioned to pass item 2019-205 JT29 Special Capital Budget Amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Then seconded by councilmember Chambliss. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, councilmember Barber. And that does it for business items. I, oh, we need a roll call. Okay, so I will ask Bridgette to call the roll.
Okay.
Okay, so I can, it's good if you have a list of members, I guess we, okay, so if you wanted to start.
Vento?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Chambliss?
Aye.
Fredson?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Sarek?
Aye.
Redson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Okay, on a roll call vote, we'll just make sure we have everything recorded here on item 2019-205 Joint 2019 Special Capital Budget Amendment. It is, we have all ayes, which is how many?
Nine, or, yes, nine.
Eleven. Eleven.
Eleven, okay, eleven in favor, and obviously no opposed, the motion carries. I will just ask council, did we do that correctly? Legal counsel, everything good? Okay. So, when we have, I didn't realize that was going to be a roll call either, so next time, well, no, we don't get, this doesn't happen that often, but thank you. Next, we have an information item. We have a county commissioner here, Hennepin County, if you want to come forward, Irene Fernando, she is visiting. Occasionally, we'll have people that will come through that are elected officials, asking them to introduce yourself, talk about how long you've been on the board, some of your committee assignments and your priorities, so you have about 10 minutes, and then you'll have some opportunity to ask Commissioner Fernando questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council, staff members, audience members. First want to open, owe my gratitude. I definitely appreciated public service prior to being in office, and after seeing all of the governing bodies and advocacy groups and staff members that worked together to ensure a very vibrant future for our region, my gratitude only grows literally every single day. So appreciate the opportunity to be here and for the work that you do. Again, my name's Irene Fernando. I was elected as Hennepin County Commissioner for District Two just this past November, and was sworn in in January. Hennepin County, as many of you know, is 45 cities, and it's organized into seven districts. I represent District Two, which from the west begins with Plymouth, Medicine Lake, Golden Valley. In Minneapolis, it's all of North Minneapolis, Bryn Mawr, North Loop, Northeast, and then it's also St. Anthony Village. So I get to intersect with several of your council members here, and also several different city sizes, village sizes, two of the light rails that will be coming through intersect in District Two. And so again, thank you for the governing expertise that you offer every day, and the ways in which you work with and alongside staff members and other leaders of government to get the work done. In terms of myself, I grew up in California, my parents were from the Philippines, I moved to Minnesota to attend the University of Minnesota, and it was while there I co-founded a youth leadership nonprofit, a nonprofit that I led for about 11 years. 22,000 students came through our programs, and it is through that experience that I believe in the immense power of small groups of people charging themselves to do things bigger than themselves, bigger than their respective communities. In some ways, our country is old. We think of the 166-year history of Hennepin County. I'm the youngest woman to be elected to our board ever, and with Commissioner Angela Conley, we're the first people of color. In one sense, that's a long time, and in some senses, that's very short, and so I am completely honored to get to serve in these positions, in this position, alongside positions like yours, because I truly believe it is through many, 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 many viewpoints, many, many people disagreeing well, disagreeing well is a key feature of this, disagreeing well with shared intention that we'll be able to create a future that we're proud to pass on to future generations. That leads me to the areas, my issue topics that I get to be a part of. Hennepin County has committees of the whole, meaning we all vote on all topics, so I get to be at all committees, which affords me the opportunity to weigh in on any topic, but in terms of positional leadership, I am the chair of our Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and I am vice chair of our Public Safety Committee. So I'll speak about those two and then talk about a couple other items that I get to champion. So first around the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, we are a separate board alongside the Railroad Authority and alongside the board. And so as a first year to get the chair, a board was a very exciting opportunity for me. I describe the HRA as at the intersection of workforce development. Do I have access to a living job, to a quality job at a living wage, housing development? After working a full-time job, do I have the opportunity to afford a place that is dignified, that is reliable for me to lay my heads for myself and my loved ones? And then the third intersection is economic development. With the leftover money that I should have after working one or more full-time jobs, do I have places where I can spend on retail, food, and services, close to where I live and/or close to where I work? So for me, this is how I describe the HRA, which is inextricably interconnected with issues of demographics, of population trends, of climate, of equity. Second area where I have positional leadership is vice chair of Public Safety. In this, I'm looking at upstream systems approaches, where we might be able to test interventions in different ways. So the law enforcement portion of Hennepin County is the sheriff's office. Of course, Hennepin County Sheriff is an independently elected person, so I am not able to direct that work, however, in many, many ways, through the attorney's office, through the sheriff's office, through the sentencing options and our partnership with the courts, that we, I believe, can play upstream and more imaginative roles with respect to criminal justice. Additional areas where I champion, so I don't have a voting positional leadership opportunity, but I'm certainly championing in a more formal way versus around the census. Hopefully, we're all in on census, and fear not, I'm sure you'll hear from me much, much more on that topic. And the second is our No Wrong Door Initiative, so the space in the county where we're advocating for young people who are being exploited, typically as we think about human trafficking and sex trafficking. So those are the issues that I get to be a part of. Alongside all of that, I hope you all are aware that I am a big supporter of transit, very, very big supporter of transit, I'm all in, let me know if I could be of assistance. So Blue Line is a big portion of District Two, so I am hoping to work closely. Of course, I certainly vote in favor of all things Southwest as well. And then additionally, with staff members from here and by, in partnership with Plymouth City Council and Golden Valley City Council, we are looking at a, I should say, we are resurfacing the study that Met Council actually did many years ago around Highway 55 corridor. So I'm really excited to resurface that. Actually, just got a meeting on the books that are bringing decision makers and policymakers from Medina all the way through to Ward Five of Minneapolis, so the entire corridor, which I'm really excited about. I kind of included Medina because the public works facility for Hennepin County is just like a block or two off of the original study, and so I personally would love to see when we have Medina, Hennepin County staff that are office in Medina, instead of folks driving into the city that they could take a BRT route, because oftentimes we have meetings at the Government Center in this format, for example, and it would be really cool in a future state to know that they're all taking a bus route to transit in order to do that. So that's a bit about myself, my issue priorities. In terms of how I work, I hope to be accessible and professional, respectful, and provocative. We are in a very specific time in history, and I believe that when we listen loudest to those impacted by decisions and implementing decisions, when we get to know one another and disagree well, again, disagreeing well, I think, is a very, very key feature, and then try to come up with imaginative ways of being, I believe that in the coming decades, we will be very, very proud of the work that we've been able to accomplish with one another. So with that, I am happy to stand for any questions, and again, really appreciate the opportunity to share a few words.
Thank you, and just a little bit of background, so you are our first sort of elected official we've had, and for my style, it's about partnerships, right? And so we open this to elected officials, and I think it helps us understand who you are, and also, you know, we're kind of mysterious over here sometimes, like, who is the Met Council? It helps you see who we are, and so we're really glad you're here. I saw some hands. We'll go, how about councilmember Chambliss, then Vento, and then Fredson, and Johnson. Councilmember Chambliss.
Thank you, Irene, it's so great to have you come and speak to us, and congratulations on your newest endeavor. I have, since you're the chair of the HRA, and we've been talking a lot about housing and vouchers and housing conditions in the Twin Cities, as you know, the rents are, rental rates are rising, our voucher list is growing, and after the legislature makes their decisions, we've been left with one-time, one-time funding, which has caused us to dip into our reserves, and that's not sustainable. So can you tell me about your position on partnership and how we can move the needle into the future with regard to housing opportunities?
Yeah, certainly, thank you. So, I'm chair, councilmember, the housing is, in my opinion, a very clear crisis in the state of Minnesota, and so I want to begin there. Any efforts that we do from the viewpoint of residents will feel like a drop in the bucket, so I need to, I first want to acknowledge that. Then I'll talk a little bit about how I, I'll talk about this year's budget and what we're prioritizing, and then I'll end with more of kind of a broader systems view. So the county, you talk about being a mysterious place, so is the county. Very few people are aware of what we do, but from a legislative standpoint, counties do what the state tells us to do and cities opt out of. It's a very glamorous layer of government, it's always a joke, and the way that I view how we make laws, if you will, is through budget prioritizations. So there isn't a day where we say, come on this day and tell us how you feel about housing and hold your signs. That is possible for city councils, that is possible for the legislature, that's not quite as possible in the same way for the county. So that means there needs to be a very, very deep partnership and deep engagement always so that we can know how we can, know the levers that we want to pull in order to create the budget prioritizations for those coming years. So specifically for this upcoming year, the budget, the levy that we are voting to approve, the maximum levy we're voting to approve for next year increases our budget by almost 30%. The HRA portion, we have a pretty small budget, so it's not as impressive. Most importantly, the policy implications, we hope are really profound. We, in the past, the county has been last in funding. Set your project up, we'll get you over the finish line, help, you know, we'll figure out the gap for you, which is a useful portion of how we do funding. We will be moving into first in funding moving forward. For our first in funding projects, it will be focused at 30% AMI and lower, and as you all know, you all are part of setting the standard of 80% AMI and access to affordable housing, so this is for 30%, this is $30,000 or lower for a four-person household. The county has historically not spent money on bricks and mortar. Actually, I don't think very many places have spent money on bricks and mortar for that low of income. So why is the county engaging in this way? It's because we are uniquely positioned to pair that with our health and human services expertise and make sure that we're also increasing our health and human services budget at not quite the same rate, but at an appropriate rate, so that when we're building bricks and mortar, we're doing so in a way that's paired with services. We're committed over the next decade for 1,000 units, that's not enough units. People ask, why aren't you doing more? The first kind of way to think about this is supply and demand. There's a lot of supply on the higher end, higher incomes, and so when left to market forces, those are of course going to be the ones that are built. And within affordable housing, there's still high-end affordable housing, folks on the higher end, on the 80% AMI versus 30% AMI. So I'm hopeful that we change market forces here, that we change the trajectory of what might motivate a company or a developer or a program provider in terms of their upcoming priorities. So in terms of the broader system, I believe that we can have a much, a much more direct path out of poverty if we focus on the individual and looked at how to take an individual out versus dollars and cents. Right now, as you all know, I'm sure I'm saying stuff that's repetitive, as you all know, if I'm making a certain amount, I have access to vouchers, to resources, and I can make $10 more and have that ripped away. I'm hopeful that we can really create more of a mezzanine approach, a stepped approach, which is going to take a lot of folks from a lot of the governing bodies holding hands, and I believe the county is uniquely positioned to pilot some of these.
So, great, and so we-
I'll be faster.
Well, I'm just thinking, oh, you know, because it's really interesting having you here too, and so I don't, but I think, yeah, we probably can't do follow-ups too much, and as we can go through, it's, you're the first one to come, and it's interesting, right, because we have a lot in common, right? And so what I want to say to the council too, is this is not the last time you can meet with Commissioner Fernando, she's very good about meeting, having coffee, talking together, and she'll be here for, after the meeting, a little too, so, let's see, who's next? Councilmember Vento.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, thank you for being here. I'm particularly concerned about the issue of water quality and quantity. My neighborhood is getting new streets, and there have been a couple of mornings, I don't know if it's related to street work, but there have been a couple of mornings and afternoons where I've turned down the water in the kitchen or my bathroom, and it's sputtered out, and I've waited for mud or sludge or something to come out instead of water. Fortunately, it's been water and it's working fine. I think it's just, you know, a little rock and roll going on with street construction. But I, I think if, if we as a society continue to take water for granted, both in terms of quality and quantity, we're in for a rude surprise, and so as a young leader, I'm interested in how we wake up people to the issue of water quality and what thoughts you have about that.
Mr.?
Yes. If I knew how to wake people up, I would have a very long list of things that I would wake them up to, so I want to begin there, I don't have any magic equation there. First I'll get, I believe that we can leverage watershed districts a lot more- First I'll get, I believe that we can leverage watershed districts a lot more. If it's not evident by the way that I'm speaking, and of course you, I brought up, you brought up my age. People ask all the time, Irene, why are you, are you advocating for the wheelage tax when that should be the legislature? Or why are you saying it's okay for, to tax me as a Hennepin resident when it should be someone else? And I bring up my age. I say, as a 33 year old, I am not concerned about whether or not our infrastructure will crumble. I know it will in my lifetime. And so I'm not as concerned about who pays. I, I want to make sure that the outcomes are done. So for the safety and the vitality of those who elected me and those who didn't elect me. When we get to water quality, that's about runoff, that's about precipitation, that's about climate change. One way I think we could leverage is the watershed districts. The county approves the levies for watershed districts. And when the county has a long list of stuff to do, flood mitigation, water quality, runoff, that becomes a list of priorities against hundreds. But if watershed districts, if we increase and engage in that capacity differently, all of their projects focus on what you're discussing. And we could have, in my opinion, a cost effective and hyper focused opportunity that's really specific to those who are directly impacted by those decisions. Bassett Creek Watershed happens to be the one that overlaps District Two the most. And it is the one issue that unifies the whole of my district. Again, Plymouth, all of it is in Anthony Village, has a lot of diversity in terms of its experiences. And water quality, as you've mentioned, is the, is the one that unites us. So those are my early options. I'm certainly going to be thinking creatively and appreciate the question.
Thank you. Councilmember Fredson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to say thank you for your leadership on passing the wheelage tax in Hennepin County. For other council members that aren't aware, Hennepin County voted to raise the wheelage tax from $10 to $20 effective January 1st of 2020. And that will result in $10 million more dollars investment in transportation infrastructure, specifically roads and bridges in Hennepin County. And I think at a time when our transportation infrastructure has fallen apart and we are struggling to get the kind of leadership out of the federal government and struggling to get the votes even at the state level to do really just basic maintenance, not to mention building the, the kind of system that we need in the future. It's really critical for there to be local leadership. And that was not a slam dunk, I know that. It was four votes on the Hennepin County Board that got that done. And you led the way and Commissioner Conley and Gattell and Green. Thanks, if you could please relay at least my thanks, if not the council's thanks for your leadership.
Thank you. Yeah, if you, I appreciate that, Madam Chair. If I may, if you go to hennepind2, letter D, number two dot com slash wheelage, my full statement is on there. And I released that weeks before the vote. We kept kind of laying things over and progressing things because I was, people, it was very, very contentious. Probably one of the most contentious votes we've had so far. But if you're interested in, in the way in which I was not only attempting to make my position known, but to keep residents informed, and I'm, we knew it was going to be four three kind of the whole time. And I'm very grateful that four was on the side of, of increasing that for infrastructure.
And kudos to your staff, Bell Emery too.
Yeah, nice.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank you for a few things. First of all, for being so open door. You are reaching out to the community. And I've been a beneficiary of that, getting to know you early on and, and just being a fan of yours during the campaign. I really do appreciate your work, putting together kind of that Eastern Coalition for potential BRT. I've been working Plymouth and West, the Highway 55 Corridor Commission that goes all the way out to Wright County, is also now starting to really understand the benefit and how workforce needs to move to all the jobs in that corridor. And so I'm excited that as we kind of get the east end of that, you know, back into play and, and synced up. Because of course, as, as we all know, it's connecting into a broader transportation system. I really appreciate your leadership on that. As a person who's been in local government for many years, and especially with transportation as one of my top priorities, we really needed the county to be there with us. And it wasn't always that case for my district, now that I represent District One. I do appreciate the additional dollars that will go into roads and bridges in addition to transit for my district. Transit's important for the opt outs and, and some of the limited services provided. But having that other infrastructure invested in, we've been begging for a long time in our district. And we have some really important projects that are moving forward. But again, it's about partnership. And you have really even helped beyond the piece of my district that you represent to be a voice for, you know, well into District One. So I want to thank you for that. And I really look forward to working with you on, on that and many other issues.
Yes, thank you.
Could you tell us when that 55 corridor meeting is? Because I know I have a complex, so I don't know if other people on the council might be interested.
Oh, yeah. I think it's Tuesday, October 8th at 8:00 AM Plymouth City Hall, if that's a Tuesday. It is on Tuesday, if it's October 8th, I think is the day. 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Love to have you all there. The purpose is for Met Council staff, they've been working with Coal Henneper, I believe. And first and foremost, just getting the same information out. So Plymouth City Council received that information. They passed a resolution. Golden Valley had previously passed a different resolution that's adjacent, but not quite the same. And so want to give folks the same information and encourage their respective councils to begin seeing this as a potential for, for policy change. And I know I personally want, it, it's always easier to effect change in this spaces when we have examples. So I'm going to offer the folks to ride the sea line, you know, and say, like, this is what it'll feel like. It's quite fast, sea line to green line. That's how I got here today, from home, home, north of Minneapolis, to how I get home. And so I, I'm really grateful at the partnership. And I know that this is a different room, but I will get County Road 47 too.
Thank you. Thank you. And Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. Going back to the issue of affordable housing, with supply and demand, back to supply and demand, there are so many landlords who don't accept vouchers, especially in single family and smaller units. What kinds of programs do you have to incentivize, given the low vacancy rate, to incentivize more landlords and property owners to accept vouchers?
That's a good question. We don't have as many, we, the county, don't have a direct line into that portion because that is more of a city function. Where we can have, so, so I, I'll be really upfront, I don't have a direct answer to that. A lagging indicator of the issue that you're talking about is eviction. And eviction is a place where the county can play a very different role with emergency assistance. But in terms of the county to landlords, I have not personally yet found a, a viable path or way in which we will be able to influence that. I do think that we can play a role by being first in on funding, by providing different resources for people who are in need of housing. And then should people be threatened with being removed from housing with an eviction order, the way in which we engage with those individuals. Unfortunately, that's my answer.
Thanks. Councilmember Sterner.
Thank you, Chair. Just first, I wanted to kind of thank you, but I had a kind of a line read as some of us came back from a conference, Real Evolution.
Oh, yeah.
And so they, the sea bus, you mentioned the sea line. When they say the sea bus, it actually is the sea bus, you know? It's the ferry that goes across the water, you know? But it was nice to see their integration of all kinds of transportation levels. So maybe someday we'll have a sea bus on Lake Minnetonka or something there. But I just wanted to see if you were able to make some inroads in with some of the opt out transportation districts and what, you know, one that, like in your district and that. Because that's sometimes, that's our challenge, is making sure we're connecting and that type of thing.
Certainly. Yeah, I think for opt out or the suburban transit cities, I, I believe that I've made some decent inroads. So Mayor Walshy over in Plymouth ran on a city and transit oriented campaign, which is not always the message that lands in, in suburbs, suburbs generally, specifically not Plymouth. So I think that's a very, very positive thing. For me, I've tried to understand what their why is. When, when I ask, they, both Maple Grove and Plymouth members have said, if you look at a transit map even decades into the future, we're not on it. So I think that's important to know that it's less of a, for me, I think it's less of an opt out. It's, we're not on the map. And so how do we put them on the map? So I think the Highway 55 corridor is a big part of that. So that's my main inroads. The second angle that I have, which I've, I'm a very transparent person, so I already told them all these things, is around transit numbers. What's really fascinating is I could probably get Plymouth Metro Link ridership numbers just as fast or perhaps faster than if I were to ask about a metro transit line. That's not meant to be competitive. It's meant to say, just because they're not on metro transit or our system, doesn't mean folks aren't using transit. Plymouth Metro Link has incredible ridership, very, very, very high. And so first and foremost, let's put them on the map. That's really, really straightforward and grateful at the partnership. And thanks in advance to Coal or whomever who, who has already worked with the, the suburbs and who will likely come back again. And then let's dig into ridership. What might it look like if we were to stitch together? So maybe there, I wonder if there's a medium place between how we're viewing their opt out now and, and what we see. Regardless, let's get them on the map. Let's see what their numbers are and really see it from, from their view first.
Right, thank you.
So Councilmember Wolf, and then we'll, and then I'm going to ask a question, then we'll probably have to wrap up. So because you're first and you hit us on a light agenda day today, you know, we could probably go on and on, but we have to keep it to a certain amount of time because we don't know who else, of course, is going to want to come and address the council for elected officials. Plus, just so if anybody's thinking about this or listening out there, that it is just about issues and the counseling and getting acquainted with each other. So, Councilmember Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we deal with seven different counties and get to see the different cultures in each of the different counties. And they each have different ways of doing things. I'm from Dakota County and I've lived there for 27 years. And for the past 30 years, Dakota County has been doing affordable housing collectively. They tax across the entire county. And then they build subsidized projects for workforce housing. And it's been very successful because everyone, whether you live in a community of 200 or 60,000, everybody is paying in. And the county looks at where is the best fit for the next project. And the cities actually line up for, I want to be next. So it's been a great program. And it's gotten a, a better rap than you would normally see for affordable housing projects because the county does it so well and cooperatively with cities. But Hennepin County, that's never been, it's been, each city has to do their own deal. Do you guys ever consider doing something collaboratively across the whole county? Or do you prefer the way that you do it?
And Chair Councilmember, probably in a popular sentence, I'm quite pro taxes. So I would absolutely love if we did it that way. A big part of how the reserve powers of cities is that they are not subject to what we, they're not required to do what we say. So counties do what the state requires us to do and oftentimes what cities opt out of. So cities are allowed to opt out and do their own HRA, which a lot of, a lot of folks do. So while I would love to have the taxing authority to do it in that manner, that is not a governing, that is not a governing authority or choice that the county can do at this time. Personally, I think that we should do what you've just stated statewide at some point. I, I think we, at some point, the state statewide, we will be at a critical enough juncture where we say, we need housing supply across the board. So that's a bit conceptual. And the direct answer is no, that is not something that we are able to. We do it in a certain way like that because our property taxes technically are on everybody. And through that, we then prioritize different projects. The county doesn't build that many of our own projects. The biggest finance, the biggest opportunity we have for affordable housing is our conduit financing. We can leverage $200 million much more easily than other counties can, with no direct financial impact on our budget, but preserving a lot of affordable housing. So I'm hopeful that we can do a lot more of that, that will get at workforce. And then through our property taxing authority, so not quite the same authority that you're naming in terms of unison across all 45 cities, through our property taxing authority through the HRA, that we can then build 30% and lower and change that way. But I, I certainly love that. And Dakota does a few things really well. I get to serve on a few other boards that have many, many counties represented. And I've been really grateful for my counterparts in Dakota. So you're in good leadership there.
Good, well, great vision on housing statewide and the need. And I was just talking about that out in Apple Valley today, right Wendy? That it's, it, we know the, a demand far outstrips the supply. So I wanted to thank you for coming. And the first time I talked to Commissioner Fernando, I called her and we both found out we both grew up in the West. And so somehow we, we speak very frankly to each other. And I think that that's, I, I like your style and what you've been able to do so far. And I give a bright future. Just to say, I have, you know, I'm going to ask you this question and you can answer it how, how you want to, but sort of the vision for the Botno line and, right? Because there's, you know, there's, there's the people vision about bringing people together. And then there's the transit vision. And then there's a transformation vision, right? Of all those things that could happen. So what do you think?
Nice. So I live on that corridor. I, I live on the, essentially on Highway 55 and Penn Avenue County Road, which is a county road. So I moved there in April of 2006. And the very first meeting I attended was this little slip of paper that stuck into my gate. And it was a community meeting around Botno, around Blue Line. So this has a very specific spot in my heart and in my neighborhood. So for me, first off, Botno has always been, Blue Line extension has always been around getting transit infrastructure to the north side and to the surrounding suburbs. So as a resident, I, you know, did my little tally votes on where I thought alignment should be. I did a lot of different things. But because I was rooted in that very community resident experience, for me, Blue Line is about transit infrastructure. It's about transit infrastructure that attracts investment into communities that have not received investment in the same ways. And in some ways has received specific divestment and has been intentionally cut out. And so I believe that transit infrastructure will change the trajectory, can change the trajectory for northwest suburbs, but for my home community where I live in North Minneapolis, with jobs, with housing developments, with a, ensuring that people have, much like what I said with the HRA, quality, quality opportunities for living wage incomes, safe and dignified, reliable places to lay their heads and places to spend local to where they live or work on food services retail. So I'm committed to that broader sentiment. In terms of all the, all the mechanics that I've learned in the last eight months regarding, including the presentation that was right before here, a lot of acronyms, L O N P one and two and FFGA, et cetera, et cetera. I, I am happy to engage alongside whomever is needed to make sure that we bring those mechanical steps forward to provide that type of access and that type of livability to the residents of Hennepin.
Well, thank you. And thank you for being here. And she will be around after the meeting. So if you want to do a little more relationship building, feel free to talk with her then. So thank you. We're going to do one more item. You know, I learned about this thing at Real Evolution members, and it's a check in and a checkout. So we're just going to do a checkout, which means one positive thing. In the last week, it can be work related, it can be personal, that's happening with you. And it can be related to the Met Council. We're going to start with Councilmember Bento.
We could go today. I attended the ribbon cutting for a portion of the Lake Links Bike Trail that will eventually completely surround White Bear Lake. It was in Mod Amedai, which isn't in my district. But it was a wonderful event. And what really struck me was a message that Mod Amedai City Council member gave about how this bike trail isn't for the current generations, it's for the future generations. And it was, it was a remarkable event. It felt really good to see this community, group of communities come together to make this, this bike trail a possibility. It's going to be beautiful.
Councilmember Barber.
Today, we had a really good TAD meeting. We've been working, you've heard me talk about the Regional Association Work Group over the last few months. And today was the first culmination of all of that, where the group actually accepted the, the work groups finding. And I was releasing it now for public comment. A lot of positive changes. I think there's a lot of, it was very well thought out. The work group itself consisted from members from- The work group itself consisted from members, from citizen reps to myself, Councilmember Cummings, also representatives from different counties and more urban and suburban. And to actually get consensus on some of these tough issues in a group like that was a very major, significant, positive result.
Great. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you. I think I'll just mention about the opening of the Rabin Regional Park in Cottage Grove, where some improvements made recently. And it shows the commitment of the community to improve our park system in ways that are engagement, engaging with the community. So it was very well attended. The inauguration of the remodeling, remodels that they did. And I think it bodes well for the future of our park system to have the community as engaged as I saw on that day. So thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. A week ago tonight, I meet with the Northwest Metro Mayors Association at the Chuchu Restaurant in Loretto. And they are an awesome group of mayors that represent a large part of my district. And this past meeting, we went around and talked about the priorities that each local city is putting forward, and then what is happening to their levies and their tax rates. And, you know, I really appreciate local leaders who have to step up and do the right thing, even if it means raising taxes and seeing those tax rates go up, sometimes down. But they're really rising and meeting the challenge of the needs that they have. But it's a partnership, right? So with the county and with Met Council and with the state legislature and others, you know, talking about what some of those needs are. And I was really grateful too, because I've really been wanting to help build transparency and trust and partnership. And because the comp plans are going through the process, and because some of my communities have been receiving grants, and Rogers has the big wastewater treatment plant turned over to Met Council and all of that. There were lots of accolades for the Met Council staff. And I just want to say that publicly, the hard work that goes in day in and day out, and those local communities, most of them smaller communities, are still very, very important to the, you know, quality of life and economic vibrance in this whole region. They really are still in the path of where economic growth will take place far off into the future. So it was a really great meeting. I love them and just appreciate growing that partnership with them.
Excellent. Thanks. Councilmember Shambles?
Thank you. Don't have a whole lot to say, other than my focus is and has been and will be people first. And we need to really focus on that as we do our regional planning, as we make our decisions. That's what motivates me and gets me up every day. And I was happy to hear Ms. Fernando mention that as well. Looking at how we do transportation planning across the region and across the country is so important. I've been to a couple Rail Evolutions, and each one is slightly different, but we all have the same issues and the same problems. And I'm just happy to be able to continue to learn, grow, and contribute.
Great. Thanks. Councilmember Sterner?
Thank you, Chair. And all your rules are only one, so I'll just say it was between
One tonight, yeah.
Sensible Land and US Coalition, they talk about housing was really interesting. But I'll use the one over the weekend. We had a two-day conference with Clean Water. Council, we went down to Rochester, and we went in the area, and I was really interested with all the different people involved with Clean Water and Habitat, and seeing what their, how the business, private partnership, and our, how our state does, you know, a great job with PCA. It's always sound like where a golf course got converted to a natural water coming through, and some of the cleaning, and have new crops, trying to get the nitrogen out of the ground. But it was pretty good. And seeing some of the old colleagues, like Mayor Norton was there from Rochester, and Representative Leblanc was there. So it was quite a big ones. And we had the Senator from Laverne, I forget his name, but it was really quite a well-attended by quite a few people. I'd say we had probably eighty people there total, two days. So learned a lot, and it was very great that we're working on Clean Water for everybody.
Great. I'll just let you guys flow into this. I don't have to call on you.
Last week, I attended the Family Housing Fund Board meeting. And I think what's exciting to me is how many people are coming together around the issue of housing affordable to all, and how many creative, out-of-the-box kinds of ideas, because that's what it's going to take, that come out, and the family housing is willing to support and figure out how we can make this work. And then early in October, family housing will be, will be putting on the luncheon for the Minnesota mayors together, who are going to be meeting next in Fergus Falls. And I'm planning to attend that, even though I'm no longer mayor. But it's a really interesting agenda about housing, not only in the metro area, but in greater Minnesota as well. And then a discussion further about the role of immigrants in our workforce and the importance of. And so I think the combination of those two big topics and how they come together will be really an interesting discussion and dialogue with different kinds of stakeholders. They're giving their thoughts. So I'm excited about that.
Great. Council, I'm going to report on Councilmember Fredson. And I went to a meeting called Reimagining I ninety-four. And I don't know if you've heard about that. That's been happening for a while. They've been through Phase One, which was a community engagement part. And then Commissioner Anderson Kelleher called a meeting to start sort of Phase Two. So it was very interesting because she opened the meeting with talking about the mistakes of the past, I ninety-four going through the Rondo neighborhood, how that affected people, and that when we are reimagining this corridor, we really have to be more thoughtful and change the way we have been doing things. It was the Commissioner Pierre, it was Sheriff Hornstein, and then Senator Dibble. It was Mayor Carter and Commissioner Carter. It was Daithao. And gosh, there were lots of electives there. Hennepin County, we had Lisa Goodman's aide was there. I mean, just a really good group that I think talked about that a lot of us have spent our lives, me too, driving I ninety-four, right? Because as I lived in Maplewood, I would go up and down that corridor all the time. I think that they had, we had a chance to hear about the engagement and to talk about the future. And really, they took Councilmember Fredson's suggestion, which the next thing we're going to do is focus on what happened in that community engagement in the past phase, and what are we going to do going forward? And the ideas we talked about were transit, and obviously transit being important and transportation. Maybe there would be an inline station at Snelling. I didn't mention that, but that's something we kind of want here, right? About doing land bridges. So you've all heard of land bridges. They kind of go over the freeway. So the opportunity to maybe create more parkland, you know, over ninety-four. There's a lot of really interesting ideas. I think they'll go on for a little while, right, Councilmember Fredson, maybe a couple of years. But to me, it's fascinating to think about reimagining I ninety-four and what it could be or that you get to go to. Tell us something.
I would like to say that I live just a block off the Lake Link's Trail. I live in Matamidi, and I'm happy to hear your update because I am really looking forward to it. And I think what I'm looking forward to is my son, who is only two now, being able to ride his bike safely along there in our neighborhood.
See, there's the future, future generations.
Yeah, I'd like to stop and take a little inventory. You know, we did Rail Evolution. And coming out of Rail Evolution, and you stop to think about our Strengths Finder that we've done. And reflecting on that is, you know, my strength, one of my strengths is I'm a learner. I really enjoy learning. And I learned a lot of Rail Evolution. And bringing that back, reflecting, and thinking about, okay, how does, what I learned there, how can I take inventory of my own district, and how can we move forward on that? And it really dawned on me, it really came to, in my mind, how important transit-oriented development is, and how we need to be smart about where we develop, and how this can help communities, help individual families. And makes me realize that we've got some good things going on here. We really do. But we still have a lot of work to do. There's a lot more that needs to be done. And what that means is, you know, like figuring out how to make, how to make the development, not, right now, a lot of plagues for Botno and Southwest Light Rail. We keep forgetting about North Star, and how important North Star is for that corridor. So I'm going to continue to beat that drum and try to make sure that we continue to get ridership developed along that corridor. And thank you for this.
Thank you. Councilmember Fredson?
Thank you. So I was going to talk about rethinking I ninety-four, but instead I'll say a couple wedding-related things. So I get married in ten days, right? So that's sort of top of mind. And first of all, the honor of being able to attend my friend Peggy, Lieutenant Governor Flanagan's wedding this last weekend on the shores of Lake Pepin and Red Wing. And it was a beautiful day, even though the forecast that it was going to rain, and we're right at one o'clock when they got married. It was a beautiful day. The governor was down there and spoke. It was just very powerful in terms of, you know, in the moment, just kind of looking out on Lake Pepin and saying, how often, how many times in your life are you surrounded by all these really special people in your life, in this very special place, and such beautiful people, beautiful place? And I thought that was super powerful. And then the second piece is, one of our goals with our wedding coming up two Saturdays from now was to add some local flavor. And it was not easy, but just locked down a combination of Sammy's Pizza, Northern Waters Smokehouse food, and then Castle de Angel Creme ale from a brewery in Two Harbors, and cider from the Duluth Cider Company. And so we're going to have great local food in Duluth, and I'm looking forward to it.
Well, congratulations on your upcoming nuptials. That sounds really exciting and really fun, too. Great. Councilmember Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to follow up on what Councilmember Gonzalez said because I'm familiar with the history of how we got to that project in Cottage Grove. And Washington County had a serious drainage problem. They had no emergency outflow for parts of Woodbury. And so they first came to park staff many, many years ago. And said, we want to give our excess emergency drainage through the park, which of course was like, you want to what? So staff from the Parks Division, who are unfortunately no longer here. They've either retired or moved on to other jobs. But they worked for more than five years with Washington County to make all of the details come together so that the park was improved because it had significant issues with invasive species, with poorly designed trails, with bad drainage where there was flooding in areas of the park. So they worked so that they could do both things, have that emergency outflow that works with the park, not just goes through the park, but fix all of those problems that they had in the park to make the whole thing better in the process of meeting that need that the county had. So I'm grateful that it's done now, because it was very, very many years. It was at least five or six years of staff work, just to get the plans to come together. But when we can do something like that and have it turn out well for everybody is a testament to what a great staff we have here. And I'm happy to hear that it's done.
Excellent. Regional Administrator, Meredith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been a week of really good partnership meetings. I feel like I've talked to everybody from Minneapolis to the DNR, to the Department of Admin. And Andrew Verden, our former colleague and current State Census Director, was just sitting here. I think he stepped out. But to piggyback on what Commissioner Fernando said, the council's a big fan of the census. We maybe weren't super helpful in the 2010 census, is what I've been told. I wasn't here. But we were going to be super helpful in the 2020 census. So we have made some plans, and that was one of the many just really good partnership meetings with other agencies and communities. I had them last week.
So just to thank Meredith, you know, she was amazing in the meeting along with our staff in terms of the number of lists, the number of contacts, the way that we can publicize when you think about our buses and all those ways we have to publicize things and tweets. And so it was almost staggering. Honestly, the amount of communication that we're going to do around the census is amazing. So thank you to you and your staff for doing that. I think it's going to be very exciting to be in the center of that. So with that, I'm hoping to do, eventually evolve into a check-in and a checkout. It depends on how long the meetings are, but I think the checkout is helpful. And I think focusing on sort of one thing we can each say, and then we're each talking to. Because I think part of coming here is establishing a sense of community, right? That we're all part of this. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Sterner and seconded by Cummings, a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?